Good evening. Thank you all for joining us. This regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of Socorro ISD is being held December 15, 2020, the time is 6:00 PM. This meeting will be held by teleconference. The teleconference audio can be accessed at the following toll-free number: 1-866-899-4679, using the access code 280161205, and through an audio feed located in our YouTube channel. Any member of the public wishing to comment on an agenda item can send the comments to the following email address: On March 16th, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Ken Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of open meetings laws to the extent necessary to allow telephonic or video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following: Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Number one, although members of the Board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by a telephone call and internet access. Number two, we are meeting by use of both telephone conference call, online access, and through use of an email link for questions. Number three, if a member of the public submitted written comments in advance, the Board President or a member of the administration will read the comments into record before or during the Board's consideration of that item. If you would like to provide comment at a future meeting conducted by video conference or telephone call, please follow instructions on the meeting notice. Number four, all other meeting procedures will adhere to Board adopted procedures to the extent practicable. Number five, an audio recording of this meeting is being made and will be available to the public at a later date. Number six, we apologize in advance for any unforeseeable difficulties and ask for your patience as we navigate unprecedented conditions. And number seven, if you have any questions about these suspended laws, please call the Office of the Attorney General at 888-672-6787. And I'll now do a roll call to ensure that we have a quorum. Mr. Morales?
I don't believe he's joined up yet, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Guerra?
Present.
And I believe Mr. Gander is late as well. Mr. Garcia?
Present.
Mr. Mina?
Present.
Ms. Rodriguez?
I'm here.
And we do have a quorum. And now, our item number two is our Pledge of Allegiance, which is going to be led tonight by Ms. Patricia Fernandez, the Principal at Herschel Antoine. If you'll all please stand and join us.
Good evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez.
Thank you.
We will move on to item number three, Superintendent's Comments. Dr. Espinoza?
Yes, President Nahara, members of the Board and Team SISD. I'd like to honor students and teachers for their achievements with our Board honors for this month. Normally at our Board meetings, we honor our awesome student staff who've earned local, regional, and statewide, and also national recognition. But as you know, due to this situation that we're in, we haven't been able to honor those exceptional individuals. However, they still deserve that moment in the spotlight. So to honor our students and staff, we have posted an article on our website along with an animated presentation. We're also sharing it on our district's social media accounts. So please share the story and post with your family and friends so they can applaud our high-performing students and staff. So this month, we're honoring our SISD students who were selected for a statewide gallery in the 2020 Tassatazby State Art Competition, and they are Russell Acosta from El Dorado, teacher of Virginia Castañeda; Oscar Álvarez from John Druigan, teacher of La Argón; Valeria Castellanos from Desert Wind, teacher Karen Pérez; Sofia Cedillo from Puente Esmero, Karina Álvarez is the teacher; Esmeralda Chavaria from Eastlake High School, teacher Claudia Castañeda; and also Isabella Hebler from INZER, teacher is Ms. Melissa Arriano; Angelica Soto from Pebble Hills High School, and the teacher is Rosa Villarreal. So congratulations to those winners. And next, we have SISD students who won the 2020 El Paso Community Cottage City Art Contest. And those are, those individuals are Sebastian Gerardo from INZER, third place; Isabella Hebler, INZER President's Award; the teacher there at INZER is Ms. Melissa Arriano. Also, first place goes to Dustin Pérez from Mountwood Middle School, teacher is Abel Saucedo; Jeffrey Hernández from Desert Wind, first place 3D, teacher Ms. Karen Pérez; Megan Trevino from Socorro High School, she got first place 3D, teacher Lourdes Aguilar; Emiliano Aguirre from Americas High School, got the President's Award, teacher Samuel Muñoz. Next are students who won the 2020 SISD Holiday Winter Art Contest. And those winners are Natalia Scarlett Chavez Valdez from Roja Elementary, teacher is Luz Olave; and also Vivian Esparsa from Horizon Heights in the third through fifth category, teachers Ms. Lori Berumen; and Renata Alerma Márquez from Desert Wind, sixth through eighth category for Ms., and the teachers Karen Pérez; and Socorro High School in the ninth through 12 category, the winners Caitlin Lund-Villan, the teacher is Rodolfo Royale. And finally, we honor our SISD student athletes who qualified for and competed at the 2020 UIL Cross-Country State Championship. So congratulations goes to, from Eastlake High School who finished third place, Mr. Israel David, the coach is Keith Quinones; also from Mountwood High School, Cassandra Jimenez Esparsa, coaches Dean Cardon; and from Americas High School, Mr. Jared Laverty from Americas, and also Michael Mir from Americas High School; and the coach is Mr. Ken Lucetl. So that concludes the honors, President Nahara. Also, you know, as everyone knows, 2020, we're winding down 2020. It's been a tough year like no other, and it's really been heartwarming speaking with families in our school district who have lost loved ones. You know, and my wife and I, we're heartbroken, but we're going to continue to, we're going to continue to support and pray for all of our SISD families and all the community here in Socorro ISD during this difficult, this difficult and trying time. But I really do appreciate all of the positive feedback that we continue to receive on a daily basis from employees, positive feedback from parents, and also our amazing, amazing students. You know, it's greatly appreciated during this difficult, difficult time. As people know, teamwork makes the dream work, and we're going to continue to move forward. So again, I cannot thank the entire SISD community for keeping their heads above water, and we're going to continue to get through this together. President Nahara, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Espinoza. Item number four, recognition. It's with a grave heart that I deliver this item on the agenda. However, it is extremely important to remember our members of Team SISD. I would like to take a moment to honor Team SISD members who we have recently lost to COVID-19. Our heart and our prayers go out to the family members and colleagues of these team members, who will be missed greatly. They will be cherished always, their contributions to our school district, and let us remember and honor. Jesús Durán. Mr. Durán was a custodian at Eastlake High School. Mr. Durán worked at Eastlake for six years as the head night custodian. He was a valuable part of the Eastlake family, which he loved immensely. He had a strong relationship with the coaches and the administration of the school because he worked closely with them on the evening events and after-hours issues that would come up. Both of his children were graduates of Team SISD, and his family was grateful for the close ties and appreciation that Team SISD members showed for Mr. Durán. He will be greatly missed at Eastlake and in our district. Lepe Aravanas was an Assistant Principal at Escantrias Elementary School. He worked at the school for 10 years and established great relationships with the faculty, staff, students, and the entire Escantrias community. He loved his job, especially working with the early childhood grades because he once was a kindergarten teacher. He loved to cook and often treated the teachers at the school with his home-cooked meal. Mr. Anas loved to give back to the teachers. He was an outstanding professional with a great sense of humor. Escantrias and all of Team SISD will miss him dearly. Maria Alina González was a custodian at Mountwood High School. She was a longtime employee at the school, where many of the students and staff knew her by name. She was in charge of maintaining the front offices and the administrative staff area, who all appreciated her very much. Ms. González was very proud of her work, always had a smile on her face, and always looked out for others. Three of her grandchildren are Mountwood High School students, and her son used to work as a special education aide at the school. He now works at Slider Middle School. She was an extremely sweet lady who everyone respected and loved, and she will be missed. Sadly, Ms. González's husband, Arturo Aguilar, also died due to COVID-19. Mr. Aguilar had been a custodian at El Dorado High School and had worked at the school for more than 10 years. He was a good-spirited man who could be heard humming and singing in the halls as he worked. He was always willing to lend a helping hand and always did his job with a smile. He was an invaluable part of the El Dorado and Team SISD community, and he will be greatly missed. Santana Carvahal was a bus driver in the Transportation Department for SISD. He worked for the district for about 28 years and was truly dedicated to his job. He rarely called in sick because he felt it was his duty to be here for the students in the school district. He was a caring person, always willing to lend a helping hand, and never expected anything in return. Mr. Carvahal showed excellent customer service to the students, staff, and administration, and drove millions of miles for Team SISD as he often drove for the out-of-town assignment. He too will be greatly missed by his coworkers and everyone in Team SISD. In addition, I'd like to honor a former member of Team SISD. Barbara Pettis was a wonderful member of our community, a longtime public servant as a city representative, county commissioner, and a former SISD Board member. Mrs. Pettis was a member of the SISD Board of Trustees from 2003 to 2004. She was a true advocate for Team SISD students and employees, working to bring the best to SISD school and for the community. She was well-known in Socorro ISD and El Paso as a positive, dedicated individual with a kind and genuine spirit. We thank her and honor her for everything she did for Team SISD. She will be dearly remembered and appreciated as an invaluable member of our beloved Socorro and El Paso communities. The legacies of these individuals will continue forever in Team SISD. Thank you. We will move on with item number five, District Reports, Facilities Report. Mr. Aington?
Yes, good evening, President Nahara, Dr. Espinoza, members of the Board. The Facility Committee met earlier this month and reviewed the facility construction report that I am going to present to you tonight, and it begins on page eight of your booklet. To say that there, we have, it's been three years since the passage of the bond election in 2017, and we have completed Cactus Trails Elementary School as one of the projects. Now, that's not the only thing that we have completed. We have completed various portions of a lot of different schools. Currently, we have 24 projects in construction. We have four in design, and then we have one that we just now started working on, the project program and scope. And those 20, 30 projects will actually complete the 2017 bond program. Starting on page nine is Socorro High School. Socorro High School is moving along quite a bit. These pictures and photographs that I'm going to be showing you during this report are probably 10 days to two weeks old, so they're kind of outdated because we are moving fast on a lot of our projects. But if you would turn to the next slide, slide number 10 actually shows what it's going to ultimately look like when we finish it in 2023. But I want to spend some time on slide number 11, which is basically the site plan. As you can see in the middle of the page, you can see the colored, I don't know if it's color on your, on your presentation or not, but basically where you see Socorro High School, that will be the new footprint of the new Socorro High School. If you look to the bottom of the page, you see a meandering, two meandering lines. One is the lateral that we are going to be crossing in three different places that parallels to Rio Vista. Right before the Thanksgiving break, we've finally got all of our licenses and everything through the Water District, and we are currently constructing those three latter, or three crossings over that lateral. That will connect us into the student parking. It will also connect us into the back of the property that parallels the back where the railroad tracks are, and to our bus parking, and we'll have a third crossing into a little bit further, closer to Alameda. We have completed the band marching field. We took possession of that in October. We completed half of the student parking. The other half is currently being used as staging area and construction for our building as we go up. You can notice that the two, you can see the baseball and the softball field. We will be taking positions of both of those facilities next month, and it'll be turning those over to the camp, to the administration and the campus, along with some of the tennis courts. If you move to the next page, page 12, you can see some aerial, the first aerial or the first picture on the left is the three-story academic wing, and you can see that we've got exterior glazing storefront going up and a lot of interior finishes going on. The next page, on page 13, you can see, as we go around the building, you'll see a lot of exterior work going on and closing in. Now, let me, let me mention something about the academic three-story section that you see on page 12. That portion of the building, along with the CTE and the black box and the new cafeteria and kitchen, will be completed May and June of this year, or this coming year, 2021. Once we complete those, we are going to move all of the students into the new facilities, and that will allow us to start the demolition of the rest of the building and to complete those in a phased situation where it can be completed by 2023. On page 14, you can see that there's a lot of interior work going on, a lot of stud, metal studs, and sheet rock going on, or exterior elevations and storefront. Page 15, you can see that we've got tape embedded going on, we've got a lot of sheet rock going on, we've got corridors. These corridors now have ceramic tile wainscotes in the corridors. Turning to page 16, you can see the whole picture, a site picture of the two baseball soft, baseball and softball field. We have a newer picture of that that shows the exterior outfield fencing being completed. That was the only thing that was remaining on those to be completed, and you can see the tennis courts to the right of that. Our next project is Mountwood High School. Mountwood High School is coming along real well, too. We've got the register completed. We are completing some of the bistro and the cafeteria dining area. In fact, this, this break over the holidays, we will start, we do, the graphic artists and the people that are applying the graphics and the painting and the furnishing will start working on that while we're out on our holiday break. Turning to the next two pages, you've seen these two pictures of what Mountwood will eventually look like in the, when it is completed. On page 20, you can see that we've got a lot of interior work going on, a lot of drywall, a lot of rough, rough in on mechanical, electrical, and as I stated, we've got some areas that are beginning to finish up. In fact, we had a meeting today with purchasing, and we're starting to look at orders, ordering furniture, not only for Mountwood but for all of our other projects. So when they start phased in, we'll have furniture in there and the equipment for them to start using those facility. Our next project is Americas High School. Turning to page 22, you can see what it's going to eventually look like along Peter Cooper. Lower page shows a little bit better portion of it. You see how we've been kind of enclosed in around the existing auditorium. That work started in May of this, of this year, and that area is going to be completed in March and April of this next year. We also will be completing, turning to the next page, will also be completing the alternate number one, which is the Science Lab and the CTE addition. We'll be completing that in early spring, March, April, along with the CTE shops on the page 25 and the Science Lab additions. Those will be completed early part of this next year. So Americas is, is coming along very well. The next project is El Dorado High School. El Dorado High School is, is a little bit complicated because we're working out in fine areas like we were on the other three high schools. We're spread out all over the place, but we're, we're doing well. We've completed the band room. The architectural room should be completed. We completed all of the early college offices have been completed, and we're working on the Science Labs. Turning to page 28, you can see in the left-hand picture, you can see that two-story addition, which is the Science Lab, and that should be completed early, early spring of this coming year in '21. On the lower page, you can see the, the concession area, and then on the, the picture in the right-hand side is the new current technology facility, and that should be completed early, early part of this year, this coming year, February, March of '21. The new student activity complex, we had a three and a half meeting, three and a half hour long meeting today with, with the architects and all the consultants, and this project is, is coming along. We are, are working on, we're probably about 50% through with the design development. We're refining the design. We're, we're looking at tying down what the exterior of the building, what type of finishes we're going to have, and, and building is, is looking really, really good. If you turn to page 33, you see the aerial, and you, and everybody's aware that we purchased approximately 60 acres right next to where the new SAC 2 will be coming in. If you turn to 34, you see the ultimate master plan of that site showing SAC 2. And then on page 35, you see the modeling of how that SAC is going to tie into the existing SAC and how the district fine arts facility and complex at the south end of the new SAC, how it's going to tie into the, the facility. Working on the designs of those facilities, like I stated, and tying down what the exterior looks like and refine, refining the interior. Our next set of projects is our auxiliary gyms. We've bid those out in three bid packages, bid package one, two, and three. The first bid package was six schools, and, and everybody's aware of what they look like. The six schools are, are the, of course, the ones that are furthest along. Anita Martinez, Peta Chávez, Helen Ball, Leon Chávez, O'Shea Kelly, and Robert Etoarte. And you can see on page 39, 40, and 41 that those projects are in their final stages and should be completed after the first of the year in the January 1st, sometime in February, to be turned over to the campuses. The second package, bid package two, this Del Sol, Horizon Heights, Loma Verde, Barcooper, and Sierra Vista are underway. These projects have probably been bid more by the COVID pandemic than any of the other ones, because these are smaller contractors, and if a small contractor has some type of, one of their employees get affected with COVID, you know, it kind of shuts them down. So, but, but we're making grounds to get bid package two completed, and we're looking at Horizon, Loma, Loma Verde, Barcooper, Sierra Vista, and Vista Del Sol, as you can see on pages 43 through 45, completed, and they should be completed in, in February and in, in March. So early spring, those, those projects will be completed. Bid package three, y'all, the Board approved in November, the awarded the contract to Aztec Construction. We had our pre-construction meeting yesterday with Aztec. They are mobilizing, getting ready to start on it, and we will be starting those schools. There'll probably be some activity during the holidays, but their actually start date notice to proceed will be January the 4th, and we are giving them a year to complete. I think they will probably complete that ahead of schedule. Our next facility is the Support Services Technology Project. If there's one project that has been hit by the COVID, it's probably this one. Project should have been completed, but we are into a lot of additional days, extensions of their contract due to the COVID and... due to the COVID and due to they, they were completely shut down when their mason uh uh individual that were doing their sub, subcontractor work, masonry were shut down. And then we had some delays in, in getting some still and uh on the project due to the delays. Uh, but as you can see, forty-nine is what it's gonna ultimately look like. On page fifty, you can see actually uh that we are closing it in. There's a lot of sheet rock one up on the inside and exterior work is going on. We did set the uh units, the units, the mechanical units came in uh last this past week. And they were set on the roof, so uh that was a uh major lead uh item to get those units uh on the, on the side. Our new combo school in the Eastlake area is coming along real well. Uh, it, it's, it has started uh the next few pages. You know, I've seen some of these pictures. Uh, it sets off of Bob Hope, right off of Mission Ridge. You get to it. If you go, go down Pelacano, turn south on Mission Ridge and you go on down to you, to you uh get to Bob Hope and you take a, I, I guess you go uh left on if you're heading south. And you'll run into Bob Hope is curved and gutter and paved. And you can drive down there and you can see a lot of activity. It's fenced in. There is a lot of activity going on uh on the combo school. And uh the schedule is to complete the middle school December of twenty twenty-two and to have the elementary school open uh. No, excuse me, the middle school will be completed May of twenty twenty-two. Ele- elementary school will be completed December of twenty-two. And if you turn uh through to page fifty-five, you can see how it's gonna ultimately look. We actually had a picture of the dirtwork and sidewalk. It didn't get into the report. Our next project on page fifty-five is Eastlake High School in Pebbles Hills. Those projects are roughly ninety, ninety percent complete. We are reviewing those drawings. And we will be able to put those out for bids. This is for the sports line and for both this all and the baseball fields at both Lake and uh Pebble Hills High School. The transportation facility, uh, we are getting ready to start that after the first of the year. And that's uh, if you look on page fifty-eight, you can see the two buildings and the outline in between the two buildings. We will be covering up with the canopy and doing some upgrades to their uh uh equipment and stuff so our mechanics can have uh access, uh more access in a covered access area in order to work on, on the buses. Um, President Naga, that completes my report. I'll ask, answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Iington. Are there any questions?
Mrs. Nakada?
Yes, sir, Mr. Ganda.
I've been listening for the past twenty minutes, but we're having some problems with the connection, so, but they keep going. So uh, so, but I heard everything was trying to.
Fantastic.
President Naga?
Yes, sir, Dr. Espinoza.
Yes, uh, I want to thank Mr. Anton and the entire team. You know, uh, we were out there the other day at the Eastlake Combo School where the site and, and there's just homes so that are, that are being built. Uh, so schools needed there. So uh uh in anticipation, it's gonna be pretty nice seeing that school go up. But at the same time, as I drive around, we visit the different campuses, the, I want, again, I want to thank Mr. Anton and the other construction crews, you know, from, from Socorro High School, you know, to, to Montwood, to El Dorado Americas, all the auxiliary gyms, uh, all the different, all the work that's taking place. We were an amazing school district and people are excited as I, as I speak to people at those specific communities. And like I tell people, look, well, we have some awesome teachers, uh, awesome faculties and staff, you know, at every one of our forty-nine schools. And, and our students are, are, are performing at a very high rate. But they also need the facilities. And that's one thing that uh our district continues to, to make sure that our faculties and staffs, you know, our, our auxiliaries, uh, employees, every single employee that they make sure that they're in the best of suits. So again, thank you, Mr. Anton, for your presentation and your update.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no questions for Mr. Iington, we're gonna move on to item number six, consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled?
President Nakada, Paul Garcia.
Yes, sir, Mr. Garcia.
Yes, I'd like to pull item E two and three for discussion.
Okay. Any others? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve? Second.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item E two and E three. Motion was made by Ms. Rodriguez and seconded by Ms. Anna. And now I'll call for a vote. Mr. Morales?
Aye.
Mr. Gata?
Aye.
Mr. Ganda?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Mina?
Aye.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And the motion carries. And uh, Mr. Garcia, item E two, the agreement, City of El Paso, Mass. Uh-huh, that one. Who will be addressing this?
Mrs. Nakada, we do have Mr. Sam Garcia along with Dr. Ismael Castro to uh answer those questions.
Okay, Mr. Garcia, go ahead.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, can you guys just give us a, a brief, a little synopsis, kind of like you did uh last night? Uh, you know, I know maybe some folks were not uh attending the meeting yesterday. But I think this information is very helpful and useful and uh informational for uh, for the public. Thank you.
Yes, this is a Dr. Castro. Um, thank you, Mr. Garcia, uh Board President Nakada, uh school board members. Uh, basically what this is, is to go into a, an agreement with the city health department as far as mass immunization, obviously for uh the vaccine COVID nineteen. And the two items there that we have are basically, the first one is the um is the close points of dispensation. Basically, close, it's number two. Basically, close point uh dispensation is where we would actually facilitate the immunization of our, our, our employees within our school district. We will be partnering up with the Immunizal Passal to be able to do this uh for the close points of dispensation. And the other one for the open points of dispensation, basically, the health department will actually use our facilities to do the mass immunization using the COVID nineteen vaccine. So i- in nutshell, it's basically what it is. Obviously, there's a lot of work that comes behind it. And this would be not just in case that, you know, when we have to use it for the COVID nineteen vaccine, but as we move forward as, as a school district and partnering up with the City of El Paso Health Department.
Excellent work, Dr. Dr. Castro. Uh, do you have any idea who would be the first to get vaccinated? Is it gonna be mandated? Is it a voluntary basis? Um, how many sites will we offer?
Okay, so right now, as far as the close points of dispensation, obviously it'll be our employees. At this point, it's, it's completely voluntary. Um, working in, in partnership with the Immunizal Passal. Uh, they are a provider licensed through the, to the Department State of Health Services. And they will be able to provide the vaccines and actually do the immunization for us. Right now, it, right now, it's completely voluntary. As far as um when it would happen, um, their first tiering um uh the community and as you well know, you've probably seen the, the news as far as that, our healthcare workers working in our, in our hospitals are first one uh to receive the vaccine. And then our, our individuals living in long-term care facilities are in that. Also, right now, in that, in that uh second tier, following that is gonna be our school nurses. So they'll be able to vaccinated. Uh, right now, we do not have any information as far as uh education workers, anybody working with their schools, our teachers, our front desk personnel, everybody working within the school system or school district, when that timeline would come, come into being. Um, so as soon as we find out, we can let you know. But right now, as, as we're, as we're tearing the whole system for the, it would be our, our school nurses will be first up and then they would work towards uh the school employees. And as far as the open points of dispensation, it would be the same thing. Um, as far as facilities, uh, right now, as far as the, of that, the close point of dispensation, basically, we would run it like we do our flu vaccine campaign. So Immunizal Passal would set up a system in place at each of our facilities. We'd basically have a calendar when they would, when it would be there. And our whole purpose, as far as the employees, would be to help people register, employees register and to actually take the vaccine within our school facilities. They've been very successful at our schools as far as going out there, even our, our, uh, our, our district service center and, and the other facilities are showing up and people registering and taking the, taking the flu influenza, flu uh vaccine. And this will be for COVID and they would use the same process. As far as the open points of dispensation, uh, the uh City of El Paso Health Department, they would actually partner with us. And they would, we would work with them to uh to uh pick a facility. And one of the things that they're, as far as the open points of dispensation for the community, one of the things that they recommend is a drive-through process for the community where they, they pull in and they actually, uh, people drive up and they take the vaccine that way. So we'd work with the City of El Paso with both of the close points of dispensation in the open. Yes, sir.
Dr. Castro, and also, uh, one last question. Do we have an estimated timeframe as to when this will be rolled out?
No, sir, not this time because as you well know, with the amount of, of vaccine doses out there right now, the first ones receiving it i- is our healthcare workers. Uh, as the information is very fluid right now, uh, we are, we are partnered with the city and their, and their vaccine committee meetings that they, they have, their planning meetings. We actually have one scheduled this week with them. And as information flows out for them, because you have to realize it comes from the Department of State Health Services and they designate the amount of vaccines that each entity, each local entity or each city gets it, how much you're gonna get for each community area. And then from there, the city will then take those vaccine numbers and they'll form lots of different entities within the city. So at this time, there's no timeline as far as, as far as our school district. But we're gonna keep a close eye and ear open with, with regard to that. And as soon as we get that information, we'll let everybody know. I think this is very important because that way we can set the foundation, we can set the foundation for planning and moving forward. So when it does, when it is available for the vaccine, we're ready to go and we can start uh immunizing folks within our school district.
Thank you, Dr. Castro. Please thank your, your crew, your personnel. Uh, we truly appreciate it. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Great information. I do have one question. Mr. Blanco, can we approve both these items at the same time?
Um, no, uh, we got them listed separately, so I think you should read them in and take them up on the time.
No problem. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, do I have a motion on item E two?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Garcia and a second by Mr. Mina. Are there, is there any further discussion? Mr. Morales?
Aye.
Mr. Gata?
Aye.
Mr. Ganda?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Mina?
Aye.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
On item E three.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Garcia and a second by Mr. Mina to approve item E three. Any further discussion? Okay, Mr. Morales?
Aye.
Mr. Gata?
Aye.
Mr. Ganda? Mr. Ganda?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Mina?
Aye.
And Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Thank you. We will move on to item number seven, new business A. Consider approval of new member to fill the current vacancy on the SISD Foundation Board of Directors. Miss Miss S.
President Nakada, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. The Socorro ISD Foundation met on October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty and unanimously selected Mr. Raymundo Gomez Junior to fill the current vacancy left by Arturo Arina on the SISD Foundation Board of Directors. Mr. Raymundo Gomez Junior is currently a store manager at Walgreens. He has been working for Walgreens for the past fourteen years. He was born and raised here in El Paso, Texas. On behalf of the SISD Foundation's Board President, Ms. Susan Hill and trustees, administration recommends consideration and approval of this item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gata and a second by Mr. Ganda. Is there any further discussion? Okay, Mr. Morales?
Aye.
Mr. Gata?
Aye.
Mr. Ganda?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Mina?
Aye.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Item seven B, consider approval of Socorro ISD Health Plan Design Changes for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Mr. Carmona?
Good evening, Board President Nakada, Dr. Espinoza, and members of the board. My name is Mario Carmona, Director of Employee Benefits and Risk Management. Today I will provide a brief overview of the information shared during a board workshop presentation held last Tuesday, December the eighth. During the presentation, Mr. Audias, Mr. Heisell, and I provided a summary of data reviewed by our insurance consultant Gallagher. It included information such as plan history, projection assumptions, renewal workup, areas to impact planned funding, options for changes, and lastly, possible next steps to mitigate, mitigate cost. And I'll make reference to the board packet, uh, page one fifty and more so on one fifty-three, which covers the options for changes, which include the following recommendations. Continue current contribution rates for premier and basic plans. Increase deductible for premier plan by two hundred for employee only and by four hundred for employee and family coverage. Increase deductible for basic plan by two hundred for employee only and by four hundred for employee and family coverage. Per SISD administration, move four hundred million from the general fund into the benefit health fund. Changes and/or recommendations will need to be made before or next annual benefits opening period, which typically takes place during the month of April. Changes would apply for the next benefit plan year, which becomes effective as of July first, twenty twenty-one. President Nakada, that completes my brief summary of the presentation. Unless there are any questions. At this time, the administration recommends consideration and approval of the health plan design changes for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two plan years presented. Thank you.
President Nakada, this is Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes, Ms. Rodriguez.
Mr. Carmona, thank you so much for all the information that you have shared um through, through the board workshops and, and such. Um, I, I guess this is a question for Mr. Ressa. Um, I'm very concerned in looking at at the plan. Of, of course, I'm concerned with the impact that's gonna be made to the district and, and what the district is, is potentially seeing. However, my biggest concern is the impact to our employees. Um, you know, I know we talked about different options. Right now, we're not looking at increasing the, the cost for coverage for our employees. However, in looking at even uh an increase in, in the deductibles, um, I, I'm just very concerned about that. Um, Mr. Ressa, if we were to move forward with what we have as is, would the would the district be able to, to handle what we've got coming? If, a- and I guess my concern is if we weren't in the middle of a pandemic, if things were as normal, I wouldn't, I probably wouldn't hesitate, I wouldn't think twice about making changes. However, that's not the world we're living in right now. Mr. Ressa, would we be able as a district to maintain status quo in what we've got right now without any impact to employees?
So trustee Rodriguez?
I'm sorry, I, I, I'm not able to hear you.
Can you hear me now, trustee Rodriguez?
Yes, sir.
So currently, when you look at our financials, we did start off the year with about a thirteen point nine million dollar surplus because of the nine million dollars that we transferred in at the end of twenty twenty. And you'll see that next month when we present our financials, our audited financials for the fiscal year twenty twenty. So currently, we have really about eleven point three million dollars in reserves. And we're trending at least for twenty twenty-one exactly as last year. So last year, we ended up with about a four million dollar deficit. These are current projections, operating projections before we put in the nine million. So this year, we're looking to put in another four, four and a half million. So if that comes to fruition, then we're looking at ending up pretty much the same as we did last year, which is about almost a thirteen or fourteen million dollar surplus. If it's the board's desire, the majority of the board to feel that this is not the time for us to be impacting our employees, then I believe that we'll have sufficient funds at least to carry us to twenty-one, twenty-two. And then we'll see. It's important to keep in mind as this, this is for twenty-one, twenty-two, so you're looking at about an eighteen-month forward period that we're looking at. But if, if that's the board's desire, then we'll work hard to be able to, to keep this fun and maybe increase the, the four million dollars that we would surely consider for, for twenty-one, twenty-two to supplement that. So if that's the board's desire, then we'll certainly work with making sure that we, we look at the, the plan changes for future years, which may be a little bit more because of just holding steady this year. But yeah, I think we can certainly, at least for this fiscal year and, and probably next, have at least maybe one to two months of operating expenses in our, in our surplus to be able to cover the healthcare fund.
Thank you, Mr. Ressa.
President, this is Mr. Guerra.
Yes, sir, Mr. Gata.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion. And I'd like to move four million dollars into the general fund for the benefit plan. But keep the current contributions for the premium and the basic plan, do not increase any of the premiums and do not increase any of the deductibles.
I second that.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Gata and a second by Ms. Rodriguez. Is there any further discussion?
President Nahida?
Yes, yes, I, I, can you clarify that? We're starting to move funding and we're not sure about these things that we had discussed previously. All of a sudden now, we're making recommendations to move monies that something we hadn't discussed previously.
There's a motion at the table, Ms. Nada.
I, well, but we are open for discussion. Mr. Gata.
So the motion was move four million dollars like administrations recommending to the general fund, from the general fund, the benefit, to the benefit plan and not raising any of the premiums from the premier plan and the basic plan and not raising any of the deductibles, leaving all the benefits the same.
Mrs. Nahida? This is Mr. Ganda.
Yes, sir, Mr. Ganda.
I want to hear what Mr. Morales has to say.
Mr. Morales, did you have a comment or questions?
Yes, I do have a comment. We had discussed it previously that we were looking to try to help our employees as far as trying to keep the premiums at, at where they were previously and not, and, and the only thing we were going to do, we were going to work on the, the deductible. And now we're talking, and the reason being is the fact that we were, we were having to, to dip into our, our general fund to, to meet and make this plan play each year and year, year in and year out. We have a shortage and we have to compensate by taking money and, and filling. So what I'm trying, what I'm trying to say is that we, we as a board just talk, discussed this previously. We would, we would go out and ask to help, to have a, a, Mr. Ressa and his department help us. And now we're going back into what we've done previously. It looks to me like we're contradicting what we've done and, and repeating the same process again.
President Nahida, Mr. Mina, I have a question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mina.
So the, so we're going to add four million dollars in addition to the four million that's already in there, so it's going to be a total of eight million? Is that correct or?
No, sir. No, sir. One of the recommendations, the options for changes that we were presented during the board meeting was to move the four million from the general fund into the benefit plan. And that's the only four million that we're considering on this motion.
Okay, I see. So, so what we're can do, okay, so the mo, let me get this clear. So the motion on, on the floor now is for not to increase the deductibles, right?
Yes, sir.
Million.
Yes.
Those will be number two to number four, right?
I'm sorry?
It'll be items on the options for changes. It will be option number two, three, and four. Is that correct?
No, sir.
It'll be options number four and number one.
Number one and number four, exactly.
Number one and four.
Yes, sir.
So they continue the current contributions for the premier and basic plan and move four million dollars from the general fund into the benefits plan. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Is there, is there any other discussion on this motion?
Yes, I've got one more thing to add.
Yes, sir.
I, I want to go on record to state that due to COVID nineteen, this will be an exception we're going to make to help our employees, our teachers, and our staff across the district for that, for that reason and that reason alone. So I will support this. However, in the future, I would really like for us to be consistent in what we discuss and how we approach our decision-making. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
President Nahida, Paul Garcia.
Yes, sir, Mr. Garcia.
You know, the last time we had a pandemic was in nineteen eighteen. And I'm very, very glad in the rhetoric that I'm hearing from my fellow colleagues on this board regarding taking care of employees first, which is what I think, in my opinion, the, the most important capital, most important asset are your employees. And as you presented earlier, we had some employees that had passed away. Right now, more than ever, they need us. Right now, more than ever, we need to step up and be there for them. And not just talk about it, but be about it. So that's just what I wanted to say. I support the motion.
President Nahida, this is Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes, Ms. Rodriguez.
Again, as, as Mr. Garcia and, and stated, that was primarily the reason for my questioning, can we do this right now? Again, these are unprecedented times. We've discussed this several times before in the workshops and, and in other meetings regarding, you know, thi- this, this is not a normal situation. So again, I, I echo what Mr. Garcia said. Right now, we really need to make sure we're making as minimal changes as possible. Again, having been through medical issues myself, you know, the, the, even if you're, even as we're thinking about, oh, you know, it's two hundred dollars and, and the deductible, that two hundred dollars can, can make or break a family. You know, and two hundred here, two hundred there, you know, bills add up with, a- as you stated, President Nahida, we've lost many friends and, and family members and colleagues to this and, and again, just whatever we can do as a district to continue to support our, our, our staff and their families for those that have coverage with us, I'm, I'm all for it.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
Ms. Nahida, this is Gary Ganda.
Yes, sir, Mr. Ganda.
Then, uh, I'm very proud of this board. For the past two years, previous boards, we put nine million in to help our, help our employees with their, with their health benefits. And I'm very proud of that. You know, that's something that a lot of people really don't know and really should know that, that's something that we've done. And we're doing again this year, you know, this is a three, four million. Anything to help our employees, I'm there. I believe it's something that we need to do and keep doing. Their health, well-being is something that's great of importance, and I know it's been of great importance to this board for a lot of years. And us doing it, it makes me very happy that this board is, is a, is still on it. And it's making the decisions that to, to make sure that we're putting our employees first. It's a small, I think, that we're not going to raise their, their premiums or raise their cope and raise anything. That's great. And, you know, hopefully the next year comes around, we can battle that out again and, and keep helping our employees out. I think that's the best thing as a board is that we know that we're here to make sure that, that as a board, the, the budget is handled correctly. And if there is money there to help our employees, that's what we do for. And I'm glad that we keep doing it and we've done it the past three weeks.
Okay, I have a motion on the table.
Ms. Nahida? Yes, how does Mr. Morales? I want to reiterate, I want to reiterate that we, we are wanting to make sure that we do what's best for our employees. And under the circumstances of COVID nineteen and the pandemic we've, we, we are experiencing now, this is what at least we can do to help our employees by, by going through and supporting. So I will definitely support this for that reason.
Thank you, Mr. Morales. We have a motion on the floor made by Mr. Gata and seconded by Ms. Rodriguez to move four million dollars from our general fund to their benefits plan, but continue all other coverage as is. And now I'll call for the vote. Mr. Morales?
Hi.
Mr. Gata?
Yes.
Mr. Ganda?
It's a big yes for me.
Mr. Garcia?
It's a wow yes for me.
Mr. Mina?
It's a humongous yes for me.
And Ms. Rodriguez?
Absolutely.
And the motion carries. Well done. We'll move on to item seven C, discussion and possible action to approve petition to exclude property from the Horizon Regional Mud Association pursuant to the provisions of chapter forty-nine, Texas Water Code, particularly section four nine point three zero seven six dash four nine point three zero seven eight. Mr. Blanco?
Thank you, Board President Nada, Dr. Espinoza, members of the board. Steve Blanco, legal counsel for the district. We've been working on this with Mr. Iington and his team. Really, over the course of rather substantial period of time, a couple of months, going back into the summer. And this relates to the construction around the SAC and the need to extend Bob Hope Drive through that area. There's two things that are happening. One is this petition to the Horizon Mud Municipal Utility District asking their board to consider removal of a certain portion of that property from their taxing jurisdiction, which would then allow the district to dedicate that property to the county and the city of El Paso. The idea being that the county of El Paso will then undertake to construct and complete the extension of Bob Hope Drive through that area, part of which will touch and be near this property and other property owned by the district. And it will benefit the district. We've not finalized that yet. And the first step in this process is to have this petition prepared. The attorneys for the Horizon Municipal Utility District drafted the initial set of documents. We reviewed it. We made some minor revisions, nothing really substantive. I'm just, I'm format and changes and getting correct names and different items and information in there for Mr. Iington to be able to sign off on it. And the petition will then be presented to the Horizon Municipal Utility District Board. They will vote on it and consider it. We expect them to approve it. That will then remove this land from their taxing jurisdiction and open the opportunity for us to dedicate it to the county in the event that we're able to reach an interlocal agreement with the county. That's not been completed yet. We've prepared a draft of a proposed interlocal agreement and sent it over to the county attorney's office for their review and consideration. And the key portions of that would be the county committing all the funds, engineering, design, plans, and oversight of construction for the completion of the Bob Hope extension in exchange for the school district dedicating a portion of land that would include a ponding area that's necessary for that road construction. That issue will come to the board. And we've, we've talked in the past about the board doing a land swap in exchange with the county. The board did not like the proposal that was initially made by the county, so we kind of migrated over to this new proposal. And it's my understanding from talking to the county attorneys that they're in support of it. Whether the county commissioners ultimately vote to approve it and whether our board decides to move forward, that that's something that will happen at a future meeting. But this is step one in that process. So we're recommending that we move forward with it. This is land that is owned by the school district, it's adjacent to the, the SAC. And if the municipal utility district is willing to remove it from their jurisdiction, that's fine. It doesn't affect our land or our ownership rights. We own the property. We are the only entity that owns it. There's no taxes that are due on it, so it doesn't affect us in a financial sense. It just benefits us to have full control over the property. And if we choose to enter the deal in your local agreement with the county, we'll be able to do it. And so we're recommending that you approve this. The petition is drafted. It's very short. It's a little over two pages. It authorizes Mr. Iington to sign off on it, submit an affidavit, verify the facts in the petition, and then we'll file that with the mud, with the Horizon mud, and they'll take it to their board. Are there any questions?
Hey, are there any questions for Mr. Blanco on this item? And if not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Mina and a second by Ms. Rodriguez. Is there any further discussion? Okay, I'll call for a vote. Mr. Morales?
Hi.
Mr. Gata?
Hi.
Mr. Ganda?
Hi.
Mr. Garcia?
Hi.
Mr. Mina?
Hi.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Hi.
And the motion carries. Item number eight, executive session. The meeting is to be closed for consultation with legal counsel to discuss acquisition and sale or exchange of real property, to discuss personnel matters, and to consider administrative recommendation for principal position at Robert R. Rojas Elementary School, assistant principal position at Herschel and Twine Middle School, and the coordinator for cultural opportunity under Texas Government Code sections five five one point zero seven one, five five one point zero seven two, and five five one point zero seven four. And the time is seven ten. Texas Government Code Sections 551.071, 551.072, and 551.074. And the time is 7:10. Board members, if you will now leave this meeting and go to our executive session. Thank you. Okay, we are back in regular session. The time is 7:57. We'll continue with new business. Item 9A1, principal at Robert Rojas Elementary School. Dr. Espinoza?
Yes, President Nahara, members of the board, administration recommends Ms. Jennifer Marquez to assume all the roles and the responsibilities as principal at Robert Rojas Elementary.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Geta and a second by Ms. Rodriguez. Is there any further discussion? Then I'll call for a vote. Mr. Morales?
No.
Mr. Geta?
Aye.
Mr. Gondeta has had to leave the meeting. Mr. Garcia?
No.
Mr. Mena?
No.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, but this does leave us with a tie vote since Mr. Gondeta had to leave the meeting. Do we table this?
The motion fails if there's not a majority voting in favor of it. So it'll either have to come back at a future meeting, or another recommendation will need to be made by the administration.
Okay, thank you. And with this tally, the motion fails. 9A2, assistant principal Herschel and Twine Middle School. Dr. Espinoza?
Yes, administration recommends Ms. Monica Chavez for the assistant principal at Herschel and Twine.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Geta and a second by Ms. Rodriguez. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Morales?
Aye.
Mr. Geta?
Aye.
Mr. Gondeta is not here. Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Mena?
Aye.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Item 9A3, coordinator for cultural opportunity. Dr. Espinoza?
Yes, President Nahara, members of the board, administration recommends Ms. Yvonne Romelo to assume the roles and responsibilities for coordinator of cultural opportunity.
Show move.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Geta and a second by Ms. Rodriguez. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Morales?
Yes.
Mr. Geta?
Aye.
Mr. Garcia?
Aye.
Mr. Mena?
Aye.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
And the motion carries. If there is no further business before this board, we are adjourned. The time is 8:00 PM. I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. 2020 has been very difficult on all of us, and I hope we take, if we've learned anything from this pandemic, is how fragile and precious life is. And so just please, everyone, please be safe, and we will see you next year. Thank you for joining us.
Bye, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. God bless.
Stay safe, everyone.